we'll have a lot to discuss and thoughts. I know that City Manager Leon wants to impart and discuss as we go through a couple agenda items tonight, as you can see under the work session. So with that, we'll start with roll call. Benson?
Here.
Brunick?
Here.
Hanoff?
Here.
Johnson?
Present.
Minor?
Here.
Schramm?
Here.
Villanueva?
Present.
Weber? Mayor Moser?
Here.
City Manager Leon?
Here.
City Attorney Denherner?
Here.
All right, number two under our work session is a chance for public appearance for those in the public that want to appear in front of the commission on something not on the work agenda tonight. Not seeing any movement. So I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to City Manager Leon to discuss an update on the strategic plan and then the food sales tax initiated measure. City Manager Leon?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the commission. If you want to pop onto the website or in your SharePoint and take a look at the strategic planning document, the search bar on the website, if you just put in strategic plan, you should be able to find a PDF that looks like this. Some of you might have them in front of you or with you if you want to take a look at them. But I do want to mention this in terms of the back page. So when we put this together back in probably 2021, 2022 timeframe, we had some shorter term type projects and long term type projects. And we've done a really good job, I think, on working our way down the list. So knowing that some were going to come up sooner than later, and it's certainly we're not ever going to be done with many of these types of initiatives. But I think we've got a good story to tell in terms of some of the things we have completed. And so I won't go through listing all of those, but I do want to say that this still remains an active plan. The library master planning, for example, is just getting underway. So we're just starting that. The wastewater execution on the treatment plant started back in, even before pandemic planning. And then as we went through that process, we chose a delivery method and we're working now just on design. So that's really in its early stages as well. So a lot of work yet to do there. Those projects will take us past that 2025 timeline that we put as a framework around our strategic plan and beyond, I'm thinking. There are some of the shorter term projects that we're still working on or maybe have dipped our toe into and quickly pulled it out based on other things that came up or based on changes that happened in the community. So we still, for example, need to talk about the 1929 plant, the old water plant, and what's the future there. I think that will probably come up as Todd Larson and the group that's working on the planning for the lawn space talk. I think that building will also come up. And so that might give us a little insight too into what the community's thinking for that whole area. But that's still part of the puzzle that we haven't quite put yet together. There's also things, for example, where we've made headway, but we always have headwinds blowing to keep going. So our active transportation plan project, Dwayne and his staff are in the process of updating all the sidewalk and trail that we put together. But I think the intention of the commissions was to continue on with that and continue to, you know, carry through with trails and things of that nature. So we continue to move forward with that. The cemetery property plan, for example, we had that come up with somebody who was interested in purchasing some property. And through discussion, it was determined that that wasn't something that the commission wanted to take on. I believe that was discussed in 2022 at that time. So that got shelved or put in the parking lot, so to speak. But doesn't mean we won't touch it again or it won't come up again in future strategic planning or community planning projects. The comprehensive plan update is something that we talked about for a number of years, and that's going to get underway soon. So early this spring, we'll be working with the folks who put in proposals to talk about what they might have to offer with the comprehensive planning process. So that'll be a community effort, which certainly influences our strategic plan, doesn't necessarily guide it 100%, but influences it as well. I would have probably liked to have this year, or I shouldn't say this year, would have liked to earlier last year revisit this whole plan and hire a facilitator and go through that process with you. I intentionally didn't ask the commission to budget for that. I'm thinking that will be something that we want to budget for once we know the outcome of what we're going to discuss here in a little bit. The fact of the matter, as much as the strategic plan is about visioning and what we want to be and how we want to grow and what we want to set forth as our impression onto the visitors and in our community, it's also about thinking out of the box, but not in outer space. So we have to be realistic when we do our strategic planning. And part of that conversation is our funding sources. And so knowing last year and hearing about a potential initiated measure that could really impact how we fund our operations, I thought it best to continue with the work we're doing because we still have a lot of work to do. Once we have that answer and once we know a little bit more which way the tanker's turning, to then sit down and work together on a strategic plan. So this will definitely not be the last strategic plan that we look at or do. In fact, I would say if you reflect on the last couple of years, the more that was completed in the strategic plan and the less we had to focus on, the more we got to focus on things we had no idea we were going to work on, talk about, or, you know, have discussion regarding. Doesn't mean those were bad things. Those were important things that came up in the community, but we weren't, you know, hyper focused on some of these other items. So before I talk a little bit more about initiated measure, sales tax on consumables, I wanted to ask you all your feedback on the strategic plan. Where you, if you have questions about where we're at with something, if you feel that, you know, something needs still more attention, a lot of those things, I have some check marks next to the lines, and that feels good for me to check a few things off the list. So we have continued to do a lot of the things that we will do annually, and they've still continued to be successful. We were coming off of, we're in the middle of the pandemic and coming out of, if you think back, the flood. So we had a lot of discussion and you can see the flavor of the plan, talked a lot about being ready and being prepared. And now we're ready and prepared and not a lot has happened, but that'll change too, certainly. So questions or comments or discussions about that?
I feel like with the lawn discussion coming up, as well as the comprehensive planning, we're going to get a lot of direction from the community through those processes on what some future priorities will be.
I hope so. I hope that discussion also includes some discussion about the Meridian Bridge. I know we're talking a lot about history right now and celebrating the bridge and understanding its importance in our community. But as a capital improvement project, what does that mean? That's probably going to be on strategic planning documents from now until, well, for a long time, because that's a huge project and it's a huge question mark how that's going to impact our community. And so I think we're taking steps there to start educating and celebrating and getting an understanding from the community how important this structure really is. We know the answer to that question, but maybe some people don't. So that'll definitely stay with us. I think that we've had some great success with housing and some of the partnerships there, and those will still come through to fruition here in the next few years. So again, we'll be looking at that and continuing to focus on that and what needs are to help with workforce development.
Amy, is there anything, as you look at this, that you feel is kind of off track or not pertinent or, I'm just curious, I'm trying to quickly look down through here as well and trying to remember, obviously, our conversations on this were, I don't know, a couple of years ago, probably. So I'm just trying to quickly scan to say, you know, hey, things have changed quite a bit. Is there anything on here that doesn't make sense now or needs to look different?
Well, I think some, excuse me, I think some things we can say are complete, like marijuana licensing, for example. I think we can say we completed that. If we ever get to the point of having recreational marijuana, I don't know that that falls on to a strategic planning process. I think we definitely need some direction from commission and discussion, but we know what we're doing now. We know how to put together that. We considered that process successful for ourselves. So I think with direction, if that were to become ever something legal in our state, we could handle that. So, you know, some of these were smaller, more immediate things. One thing I think that will look different as we talk about our next strategic plan is I think we'll have more robust discussion around technology and AI and what all that could mean for cities and governments. And holy cow, will that change our lives in the very near future. So I think that will be more of a discussion. But, you know, I think many of these things were still are relevant, and especially when you think about some of the things that will never stop being important. So continuing to tell our story and spending time like we are tonight, talking about things and looking ahead at things and seeing what's coming down the pipe, so to speak, you know, and looking ahead at our facilities. And we've been able to do that because we've been doing strategic planning. And I think a lot of our infrastructure is in good shape because of that.
I feel like when we were building this vision, the Maren Creek repairs were still looming. There was a lot not done. Is that project considered complete now? I know we've done big chunks of it, but is there more planting to do? Do we, is there more?
So I would say that that project is substantially complete, the FEMA funded project. They'll need to go back and do a few things. They planted at the time, a time of year that was quite hot, and a lot of the vegetation probably is going to need to be revisited. But if you think kind of in further out, the whole project didn't cover the entire Maren Creek. So as the community grows, we need to talk about the other parts of Maren Creek that there hasn't been substantial work done, and do we need to address those as we grow to the west and, you know, by the dog park and improvements being made out there? Would that be something that the community would take on in the future, which would be a multimillion dollar, again, capital improvement project if we were to talk about that? And we did talk a little bit about that when we had our flood. We talked about how much should we ask for? Should we try for, you know, the biggest fix we can get? But again, we tapered down to what we thought was manageable and what we knew we needed and what was reasonable according to FEMA that we thought we could apply for funding. But that was, you know, happened in 2019, and it's 2024, and we still have some finishing things to do. So didn't happen quickly. I mean, the destruction happened quickly, but the repair didn't.
Yes. Thank you.
So we can always touch back on the strategic plan. Again, my intention is, once we know where we're headed with our sales tax in the future of our sales tax, that the sitting commission then talks about putting into the budget money and time for strategic planning. I think we spent a day or a day or two days, perhaps, a day with staff and a day with the commission. You did some stakeholder, we had some stakeholder meetings previous to that. The commissioners had some interviews with our strategic planning partner. It was RDG last time, but whomever that is. And it was well worth, I think, money well worth spent and gave us a lot of good direction. Again, I think you'll see some of these things coming back. And I have a little notebook in my office about some big things that have been brought up in the community over the years. Some of those you talked about and said, no, that timing's not right. But then some of those you said, let's put that in this, you know, let's talk about this when we get to strategic planning. I think that that's the place for it. So those things don't go away just because the commission doesn't act on them. So we'll bring them back up. So with that, I'm going to turn direction over to the memo that I wrote, and I'll walk you through a little bit. And I'll just let you and the public know that it's uncomfortable for people in government to talk about hypothetical situations because we like to know the answer before we suggest any kind of solution or we're not really even sure what could be brought here. But this is big enough and important enough that it's important that our community starts talking about it, which is why I want to start visiting about it with you in a more serious matter. So you all know that last year, the sales tax was reduced for a period of time, and that sunset, which I think is 2027, is being even talked about now. Is that appropriate or not? So that's just sales tax on general sales. Cities have the opportunity to also have the third penny, which we talk about as the BBB or triple B or bed boos and board. That's something that Yankton does, of course, and you know that. We have, you know, certain things locally in our ordinances, which that can be spent on, and the state also guides that as well. So we talk about that as kind of promotional or economic development. One of the things that South Dakota does tax is food slash consumables. And I say it that way because the wording people are using is food, but I think the language in the proposed initiated measure is consumable, and that's not really clearly defined. We don't believe it includes things like alcohol and cigarettes, but we're not sure about things like hygiene products or vaping products or, you know, vitamins, supplements, things like that. So that's up in the air right now. Not many states, I think it's 12 or 13 states, have any kind of tax on consumables. We do. There's only three of us states that don't offer any kind of relief program. So I think there's some states where if you're a certain income or you can apply for a rebate of your food sales tax or other essential items. I don't have the details on that, but I don't believe South Dakota offers anything like that. If you go and buy a loaf of bread, you pay the sales tax on it. So in Yankton, we think the sales tax on consumables is equals to be about $1 million. That's what we think. We don't know because they don't split it that way. So the way we receive our sales tax is, you know, it's divided up based upon what types of stores. So you can think of a grocery store, for example. You can probably guess who our grocery stores are. Hy-Vee would be a grocery store. You know, I think that there's a grocery store, Hispanic grocery store, Mexican grocery store on the east end of town, maybe the butcher shop. Walmart, for example, isn't considered a grocery store. That's considered a general merchandise store. So I don't know how much in groceries they sell versus other merchandise, but right now their sales tax is not taxed as consumable in my understanding. It's taxed as general merchandise. So the proposed initiated measure would alleviate the sales tax on consumables. What does that mean? I don't know because exactly, because we don't collect sales tax as a city. The state collects the sales tax and gives it to us. It doesn't indicate right now in the language, if you read it, that cities would be exempt, although that could be the case. I think the intention of the author was that it wouldn't impact cities. I know when the governor was proposing a cut on sales tax for food, she was not intending to include cities on that. Now, that in the end didn't come to fruition. Instead, they came up with this reduction of sales tax. But it could. It doesn't really read to me that it's clear. In visiting more with Ross and other folks in the state, it seems to me that if the state doesn't have the ability to charge a tax, we can't have the tax either. We're given our authority through the state. They remit it to us. So that's unclear to me as well. So I'm not really sure, you know, if it's premature to talk about this, but I think it's important because it'll be talked about, I think, as we go through session, and it'll be talked about throughout the summer in the community. There, I think I sent you an article in December from the Dakota Scout where it was explained a little more further what's known now. And there are a lot of unknowns. I suppose there's a chance that if it is on the ballot and it passes, that it could be interpreted in a different way and challenged and have a different outcome. That's what happened with recreational marijuana. So we have to talk about that as well. But just so everyone knows, the sales tax on food is, would be the two pennies. So in Yankton, we like to call it the first and second penny. Those are not equal, and I don't want to get too far into the details, but I will, and Alan Lisa will help me if I need to. I did put a little bit of the history for you on why our first and second pennies are not equal, because I got that question already. But those pennies fund two things. So the first penny funds general fund operations. So I listed there for you a number of things that the first penny would help pay for operationally. So I'm not talking about when we build a new runway at the airport, but I'm talking about the operations of the airport. I'm not talking about if we buy a new slide for the aquatic center. I'm talking about the operations of the aquatic center, just to give you an idea. The second penny, you don't have to reserve or you don't have to hold for infrastructure. You can blend those two pennies, but in Yankton, we do. We have an ordinance, which I included in your memo, that restricts that second penny for certain uses. And so I've lived in both worlds. Canton did not do that. Their first and second penny was general fund. And in Yankton, we have, you know, the second penny, and we joke that that's Adam's penny to spend on infrastructure, but it's for capital for all our departments. But we sometimes talk about it as being the infrastructure penny as well. So I think that whichever commission did that in Yankton was very forward thinking and smart because it's really tough when you have the blended pennies not to spend it operationally and to put away or save for big capital improvement projects. There's just usually never enough money to fund all these operations or when can you have enough, you know, staff? And the health insurance always gets higher and higher. And so to me, there was a lot of foresight there to reserve that second penny for infrastructure and for those things that were specified in that ordinance when it was put together. So I did give you a little asterix on dispatch because we do also receive E911 funds from, from, well, they're not from the county. The county collects them, but we receive the 911 funds to help with dispatch operations. But it's primarily the city that pays operationally for the dispatch center. So departments like water and wastewater are not considered general fund because there, we have a fee for the cost of that service. So that's why those are not included in that. If we have an initiated measure on consumables and it does impact cities, we would be looking at at least $1 million, we think, cutting in our general fund. And so what are the things that would be not, we would not be willing to fund? What are we going to do less of? Or where are we going to find the revenue to fund them? Right? So one thing really nice about sales tax is that we're not the only ones that pay it. So when people come here from out of town, they pay sales tax. We're really, I think, have a reason to whine a little more than other cities because we're a border city. So I see a lot of Nebraska license plates when I'm shopping for groceries, and they're helping us pay for the police department, which is awesome. And now I'll give my public service announcement that if you buy food at Costco, you are not funding the Yankton Police Department, Yankton Fire Department, Yankton City Hall, dispatch, engineering, finance. You're funding that in the community that you're buying it in. So when I call 911, I know who's going to show up at my door. So I try to, whenever I can, make those purchases here in town. However, that's the conversation to be had is what happens if we no longer receive that sales tax on consumables? Where do we take that conversation? We should probably know closer to this fall, I would say September, October, what that ballot measure looks like and have a better interpretation. But I would strongly urge to think about that. I mean, no matter what you think about food sales tax, because there are people that are opposed to taxing food, the money has to come from somewhere. And this is really an engine for our general fund. So something to talk about and think about. Where could the revenue come from? Well, you can change your second penny ordinance, as I alluded to. I don't recommend that, but that's something that could be talked about. You can opt out. I think it's opting out for operating is difficult because you have to keep opting out. And at that point, it's really more onerous on Yankton citizens because when we opt out, it's just the taxpayers of Yankton then that end up paying. The folks that pay sales tax in Nebraska, that come over from Nebraska or Iowa or, you know, come here to play a weekend of hockey and end up grabbing groceries or whatever, or go out to the lake, they won't be paying it. It'll cost us more than it costs today. And it has to be passed. And you know how that could be difficult as well. We can also do less or not do something. That's a solution as well. I don't know if that's a good solution. So I didn't go through everything here on my report. It is probably not as complete as you would like it to be, and I think we'll keep adding in information as we know more. But I think it's important to start talking about as a community that a community that this could happen. Polls indicate people are in favor of cutting this particular tax.
Amy, haven't you mentioned to us somewhere that there are cities, or maybe the municipal leagues, attempting to get figures from the state as to how much this tax we get?
Yes. We have asked the Department of Revenue if they would be willing to give us either or both, a collective statewide impact. Here's a statewide impact on cities for consumables. And, can you give that to us by community, so we would know? Al, and Duane, and Lisa, I think that a million is probably conservative. The other thing that I would wonder is if this would pass, could or would the state want to really take away the tax on all consumables and ask retailers to categorize their merchandise? Because, I would think a lot of, I mean, I don't know, you know, what, for example, Costco, is that considered a food storage and or merchandise? I don't know. It doesn't matter to me, but it certainly is going to matter in Sioux Falls. You know, to me, you're missing a lot of the consumable sales tax if you don't consider Walmart, for example. So...
Amy, I know you said, "We're thinking it's," and it's, I know it's our best guess, around a million dollars, let's say, just on consumables. But, if they would then add Walmart, aren't you thinking we're then north of 2 million, probably, that we'd have to look as being cut?
I would say more than that. Duane or Al, do you want to take a guess? At least, at least double. They're just smiling, so...
Because nobody wants to put an exact amount on it, and I get it, but I don't, you know, it's kind of like when people say it's below zero, is, can you really tell, minus 10 is that much colder?
The other thing is, when we were little, you went to the grocery store to buy groceries, and you went to the pharmacy to buy pharmacy stuff. But, I mean, I, you know, if I happen to be picking up a prescription somewhere, I might buy some eggs now, or I'm out of coffee creamer, or, sorry, but sometimes Menards has some stuff. I'm like, "We need a pallet of this," whatever. And, you know, because they have some good prices, and consumables are other places now that they never used to. I mean, I don't, they never used to show up. And, so, if that were the case, that could be really even more detrimental to the communities that it impacts us. And, it's certainly not just us. You know, I think of Canton, I always use an example, because that's where I came from, but Sunshine Foods and Dollar General are really one of their major retailers, and a lot of that was folks picking up kind of the, you know, loaf of bread and the eggs and the stuff that they just kind of needed to keep going. I mean, if that's, that would be huge for their budget to lose that kind of sales tax.
And, I know, one of the things to share, Amy and I sit on the first-class mayor's meeting, you know, obviously, something like this doesn't just impact Yankton. So, I know a lot of the first-class mayors are looking at, how do we talk to our communities on what this will mean? Because, I don't think there's a person in the room that doesn't want to not pay taxes. I mean, like, if I said, "How many of you love paying taxes? How many of you love working hard to give your money to the government?" A lot of you are probably not going to raise your hands. But, I think, you know, as we look at other communities, and we're talking one or 2 million, you know, Sioux Falls is north of 15 million, Rapids thinking they're close to 10. You know, we're talking big numbers here and how that impacts around the state. So, we're all talking about, how do we educate the community on what this means? Because, I think when, if it does go to the polls, you know, people are going to say, "Yes, I want to save my tax money and be able to spend it where I want to spend it," not realizing what that's going to mean for the community. You know, I was talking, actually ironically, to an individual today in the community, and said, you know, "We don't get to choose if we're going to supply clean water and have clean water delivered to our homes." We, I suppose we could choose not to do that. Kyle's going, "No, we're not," because we just, you know what I'm saying? We don't have a choice to say, "Hey, you're only going to flush your toilet every three days, because we just got to cut back on wastewater." We can't, you know, I would think, you know, not fill police officer positions, or eliminate a shift, or cut down two police officers on a shift. You know, and, "Okay, now, your garbage is only going to get picked up once a month," or, I mean, I just really think it's important that people understand and think about impacts to the city. I think, you know, and so, as you're talking to people, I think there's going to be a big education component here, because in my mind, and I'm not committing to anything, I think we have to see this go through, but the first thing in my mind, and I'll open it up to discussion, is non-essential services. And, what do those look like? Well, the first thing is quality of life, right? They're not, they're very nice to have in a community, they're not needed. And, look how hard we've worked to get the quality of life projects we have. We're talking about wanting to save a bridge. We're talking about what to do with green space. We want to do some bigger things for our community to make this an attractive place for people to, you know, if you look at our, to learn, to engage, to thrive, and that's probably, in my mind, where you start. Because, you can't not call 911 and have a cop show up. You can't not have essential services that we provide. Sorry, it snowed a foot of snow. Clean the street in front of the house yourself if you want to get out, because we can't afford to send the street crews out this week. We already spent, sent them out two days ago. I mean, we can laugh, this is exactly what we're up against. And, I don't know if you've looked at your budget lately, but I can't imagine where we cut 1 million, let alone getting more than that. So, I just throw that out there. This is kind of why, when Amy and I discussed this and talked about doing a work session on this, we said, "We got to start these conversations now, because I think it's going to be important to get it out in the public. I think it's going to be important for folks to talk to people in the legislature, to make sure they're understanding, because, yes, I think we all would love to cut taxes." I won't say what mayor, but one of the mayors said, "You know, what kind of scares me is, does this open up the door to an income tax at some point?" Because, the state's going to have to survive somehow if they start cutting all these money in these taxes. So, I throw that all out there, not to gloom and doom, but to make a realistic understanding of what this can mean to a city, let alone our homes.
I have a link in the packet item, so if folks want to read what's, you know, or go on the Attorney General's website and take a look at it, read it themselves, you know, if there's something there to, to, that I've missed, or something that somebody else is interpreting differently, I'd like to know. And, as people get more information on this, see articles, or have conversations, I'd be interested in having those conversations.
I'm guessing in the conversations you've had with the municipal league, there's not any proactive conversations going on at this point, as far as, if this tax were to go away, are there other taxation methods that we could look at promoting to make cities whole? I'm guessing there's probably not a lot of excitement to do that.
No, I mean, it's tough. You know, there was some discussion about an extra penny tax, extra penny sales tax for, this was a few years ago, for, you know, that would be, have to be a community vote for a specific project. But, I think that's counterintuitive if you're talking about a sales tax cut, to then, say, propose a sales tax, an initiated measure, or something in the legislature on a sales tax levy. I think that's pretty hard. So, I don't know what the answer is, and, you know, maybe there'll be more interpretation. Maybe this won't impact cities. That would be ideal for us, but without knowledge of that right now, I think it's, needs to be talked about and visited about with our community and understand it, and also talk to people about, "Hey, we need this information." November seems like a long ways away. It's not. And, I don't know, you know, effective-wise, what would happen either? Would it be then July 1, the following year? Would it be put out for a while, so that communities can do some planning? I don't think the sky is falling, and I don't bring this to you to, because I'm just not that kind of an alarmist, but I think this, we have to look at the sky. I don't know how many people even understand how cities, counties, states are funded, and I think it's important that they understand that.
So, when we're talking about this in the community, Amy, do you have any ideas of, like, what are good examples we could point to of, this is a million dollars annually that we'd have to figure out?
Well, you know, so, I would say, our fire department is a little bit more than a million. Our library is under a million. Police department's about 4.2 million. You know, I certainly wouldn't suggest we're cart-bunch cutting things, but if we talk to department heads about, "Hey, cut 20% of your operational budget," they'll all grab their chests, because that would be tough, too. You know, there isn't, there isn't an easy way. There isn't an easy way to carve that out, you know? Aquatic Center is under a million, so even if you said, "Okay, we're going to, it's counterintuitive, because we're still paying for it, but we're not going to run that," well, it wouldn't even, wouldn't even come to the, close to that level. So, I mean, and I would say we have to find a way. If this comes to fruition, and the result is, is not what we want it to be, Yankton will have to find a way, I think, to at least do the things we're doing now. I caution people to take on something new at this juncture until we know where we're at. You know, to take on a new program or initiative without a revenue source, I think, would be fool-hearted, unless it's an emergency. But...
I appreciate those examples, because we're obviously not going to cut the fire department, but it's helpful to say, you know, the fire department, for example, that's about a million dollars a year, to help people wrap their heads around what we're talking about.
Yeah, I mean, it's not a small change. It's either major changes everywhere, or one major change somewhere, you know? Yeah, and, you know, we have to do, as the mayor alluded to, we have to do public safety, we have to do infrastructure. If we don't have nice places for people to go to and have fun, no one's going to want to live here. So, you know, that's infrastructure, too, of a different kind. So...
This is tough, because I'm guessing, you know, all nine of us have different feelings about the food tax. There are reasons to oppose it, but my opinion has always been, if we're going to get rid of something, we need to figure, we need a holistic plan to figure out what's the next step then, because you can't, I just don't feel like we can take that amount of money away from cities and say, "Figure it out," without a lot of pain and chaos.
So, we tax some string, I think we tax a little bit, some things that a lot of states, you know, we tax clothing here. Other states don't, some other states, many other states don't tax clothing. It's kind of neat clothes. And, you know, it is tough. You know, sales tax is one of those that hurts the lowest earners the most. So, that's hard. If you're struggling, especially now, with prices being what they are for food, every penny counts. So, and it looks good to, to pay less. I mean, I want to pay less, too. I'm going to do a little research. I've been talking to the staff about this. I don't have a sense, for example, how much sales tax in food I pay a year. What does that really look like? So, I'm going to kind of do some monitoring. I'm going to ask some people that have families, or feeding families, to do a little bit of monitoring, so I can kind of get a sense, like, how much money is this really for a family in Yankton? I mean, is it $20 a month in tax? Does that really make a difference? You know, just to kind of quantify. And, I know everyone buys different things and eats different things, but I think, like, just to get a general idea.
Maybe one of our universities or nonprofits says that kind of research?
Maybe. It's possible.
I feel like I've seen that in the past, when we've had these discussions back in the hots, and this was being proposed, but I don't remember for sure.
Yeah, I just went to Hy-Vee yesterday, and I didn't save my slip, but, you know, I'm in, I'm fortunate that I didn't, I didn't cross my mind, but I want to start doing that and tabulating, like, what does this really mean? Because then, maybe you could put some words to it, like, you know, would you, what, how does it impact each citizen, or how would it impact a citizen, average citizen? Because everyone's going to still buy food, I think.
Well, and the hard part, like you said, is, is how they're going to define consumable. Is it just the grocery stores? Is it, you know, a Menards, or a gas station, or wherever you may get something that you can consume? Because I'm thinking about it in my mind, because I'm the grocery shopper in our house and things like that, so I'm trying to calculate, "Gosh, what did I spend?" But, I get lots of things different places.
I don't think it would be prepackaged. I think that would be still the third penny, and probably not considered, I don't know, you know, I don't know if you, if you get Hi-Chi, for example, if that's, because that's considered prepackaged, would that just be taxed one penny then? Or, you know, I don't, I don't understand how that would be looked at. So, I come to you telling you, "Hey, I don't know a lot about what I'm trying to tell you. I know a lot about it, but I want to just have the conversation, I guess." So, there's a, there's a lot up in the air yet. And, perhaps the legislature will, you know, if it passes, if it's on the ballot and it passes, the legislature will work with it in a meaningful way for communities, but, you know, if they want to cut their portion of the tax, that's one thing.
So, if this were to pass in November, it would be July 1 of '25?
I don't, I don't know. I don't know that, and I wish I did, but, you know, going forward, I'm not on the league board anymore as an active board member, other than being the past president, so I'm still quite connected with them. So, we're going to keep working with the Department of Revenue and trying to get as much information as we can as a, as a group. That probably won't be a lot before the end of this session, because they're, of course, busy with the bills that are happening this session. But, we'll pass along any information we certainly hear about, and I would guess you'll start hearing, once, once it's determined what will be on the ballot, we'll hear more and know more, and we'll probably have another discussion.
We were talking about Walmart, correct? I can't believe for a second that there's any way that Walmart would not fight on the consumable side. They're going to figure out a way to, to, so that they're not being, if it passes through the state, they are going to figure out a way to have that be, that they're not taxed on the consumable side, because otherwise, it's going to be a, they're going to view it as a, as a, you know, as a percentage penalty against them. I mean, I can't think that Walmart, as large as it is, and as much, Costco, those places, I can't think that there's any way that they're going to just go, "All right, yeah, you're right. We'll just, we're going to have an extra 7% on us in comparison." I mean, I would think that they're going to, they're going to categorize their, what they have to sell, to sell, just like, I'm sure at Hy-Vee, they're going to have to categorize what they have to sell, and Walgreens, or any other place that has, has food items. So, I would think that we would have to err on the side of, like, the reality of consumables.
Yeah, I mean, it's anybody's, we just don't know at this point. Today, Walmart is considered a general merchandiser, or a department store, maybe that's how it's categorized. Maybe it's not called general merchandise. It might be called department store. But, yeah, I mean, will, will they be required to reclassify, or will they want to reclassify? I don't know, I don't know how that will work, because we don't collect sales tax. You know, the state does, and it's remitted to us, so we don't have any control on that either. So, that's kind of where it's a little bit... So that's kind of where it's a little bit.
Quickly, I know I don't have very much time left here, but we always talk about tools in the toolbox. So if something like this were to go, if something like this were to happen, right? What tools do we have in a toolbox to try to, try to, you know, we're talking about a million dollar shortfall supposedly? What tools do we have that we could use? I know that there's caveats to all of that, but, you know, what, what tools of additional sales tax? They were talking about an extra penny on sales tax? We're talking about an opt-out?
We don't have a tool today for extra penny. You know, we could opt out for things that would require commission action and that could be referred, of course, or, or you could go directly to the public. We could try to identify a different revenue source. You know, we don't have municipal electric or municipal liquor, things like that, that some cities do that can transfer. You could change your second penny ordinance. That's a possibility. You can cut, make cuts. I don't know what other new revenue sources there are because we can't levy a city sales tax or we'd have done it already. So, you know, I think it will be probably a solution of getting really creative and a combination of things that we try to do and tough conversations we try to have with the community. So I can't, I can't think of one silver bullet where we could say, yes, we can just take it all from here.
Any other comments, questions? You're going to have to come forward to a mic.
Oh, good. I was hoping that Charlie would have some insights.
Charlie's coming with the silver bullet, Amy.
Is he?
Oh.
If you can change the second penny ordinance and redirect that, why couldn't you change the third penny ordinance also, the BB&amp;B, and redirect that? Just a question.
Al, you're going to have to go to a mic. You're just not used to sitting in front of one all the time. You know better.
This is one of my last times.
Again, the caveat of changing the second penny ordinance or changing the third penny ordinance, that didn't change the size of the pie. All you're doing is redirecting the slices to who gets what. The big thing is, is the pie is going to get smaller and we don't have a way short of fees. And all of those are subject to referrals. But we don't have the ability to say, okay, we're going to add another second penny or another sales tax penny. The state doesn't give us that authority right now. So there, literally, it's next to nothing in ordinance that we're allowed to recapture this money.
But Charlie is right. We could change that third penny. I did not mention that. We would still have to follow the state guidelines under which, so we could only change it for things that the state allows us to spend. But that's a pretty wide, you know, general description. But yes, third penny would be an option as well. And that penny is already spoken for in Yankton with a lot of things we do, too, so.
The one good thing that I could see is if it would have gone into effect July 1, the very first year, we would only have to deal with it for six months. So that makes the budgeting picture for the first year a little bit easier. The second year, however, the first full year would make a whole different story.
All right. Any other questions, comments for the city manager in relation to this discussion? All right, it appears we can give everybody a small break with no other business on the work session. So I would ask for a motion to adjourn the work session of January 22, 2024.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Anybody abstaining? All right, we are adjourned until 7:00 PM sharp. Thank you.